Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Killenly zoning board of appeals. Regular meeting Thursday, July tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We're gonna call the meeting order with a roll call.
Andrew Farner?
Here.
David Izzo? Online. Lynn LaBerge?
Here.
William Mengy? Online. And Jared Peachey?
Here.
Onto Article Three, Citizens' Participation. The public comment can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to the Town of Killenly, one seventy-two Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, zero six two three nine, on or before the meeting. All public comments received prior to two P M. On the day of the meeting will be posted on the town's website, www.killinglyct.gov. We were told there was three public comments.
So there's three public comments. They are to an application, to the application. So I would say if you want, we can do those when we open the public hearing, if you'd like. Other than that, anyone is welcome to make a comment. However, keep in mind, public, public hearing, so there'll be a chance, when we open the public hearing after the applicant presents, for people to go up, either speak for an application, against application, or ask questions. So unless you have a public comment for anything else, I'd wait until we have the public hearing.
With that being said, is there anybody that would like to speak about anything else?
I will speak as loud as you want. Yep.
So on to Article Four, the public hearing. This is Application two five eight four seven of Leonard Zadora and Sons LLC to vary the Town of Killenly zoning and regulations, four fifty dimensional requirement, Table A, minimum lot size from four thousand square feet to three thousand square feet to allow for a three thousand, a thirty thousand square foot lot serving by onsite well and septic in future subdivision on one six nine Rock Ave, the G I S M F one fifty-five, Lot seventeen L D Zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Norm Tebow, Killenly Engineering Associates. I am here representing Leonard Zadora and Sons this evening. And what we are here before you with is to request some relief from Table A, your dimensional requirements. This is a six point eight acre parcel, currently vacant land, with an address of a one sixty-nine Rock Avenue. Access to this property will actually, is actually from Highview Drive. There is a, an existing abandoned road by non-use, which is the, the Rock Ave extension. I'm actually gonna flip my drawing over a little bit here. So, so what we have, you see Rock, Rock Ave on the right-hand side of the drawing, and that green line that's going up through the, through the black property is a, a, the Rock Ave extension. The, the actual status of that road is unknown. There is no, it was, it was not abandoned by a formal meeting or wasn't discontinued by a, a, a formal meeting, but it has been abandoned by non-use. There's been some question as to whether or not it could be used to access the property. I think it's kind of irrelevant to this particular application. I will tell you that Mr. Black's property, he actually has a connection to the Town of Killenly Sanitary Sewer that runs right down that little access easement. So that is currently in place. So what, what we are requesting, we are requesting from relief, some relief, essentially for the medium density zone, the, the minimum lot size, actually in the, yeah, the, the low density zone, excuse me, the minimum lot size in the low density zone is thirty thousand square feet. We have shown a a potential subdivision of lots where we have seven thirty thousand and, thirty thousand square feet and up lots. That's shown in the subdivision. And that is, like I said, that is the minimum lot size allowed in this zone unless, unless there's onsite sewer. Then by your regulations, specifically, Subnote number three in Table A of your dimensional requirements says that for any lots that have onsite sewer, you are required to have forty thousand square feet. So we are requesting relief of that to allow for thirty thousand square feet because currently the, there is a sewer moratorium in, on the town. As you all know, we cannot hook up the sanitary sewer. We, we do have the ability to do so, either through the paper street. I also have two letters from abutting property owners. The black property, Mr. Mr. Roger Black, as, and I have a letter from him dated July seventh, "To whom it may concern, I am willing to grant Leonard Zadora and Sons a sewer easement through my property at forty-eight Lenz Avenue in or along the side of Rock Avenue to access the sewer main on Maple Street." And that's signed by him. And also, the property below that, that is shown in red, that is owned by Mr. Frank Crandall. And once again, "To whom it may concern, I, Frank Crandall, am willing to grant Leonard Zadora and Sons a sewer easement through my property at seven forty-one Maple Street in Daville." So I have copies of those I'd like to submit for the record. I also have a copy of the sewer connection that Mr. Black has to the system in Maple Street, and this is from United Water. It's basically the, the record drawing of that sewer commit, of that sewer connection that goes down to Maple Street. So I'm gonna hand these in for the record. So our obligation to you, per Section eight hundred point two point one, we, we have to, we have to demonstrate, first of all, that special conditions exist in order for you to determine whether or not this is a real hardship. And I submit, per Item A, that a special condition does exist in that the moratorium has been put in a place which does not allow the property owners to develop the property in a manner that they anticipated they'd be able to develop it when they purchased the property. They actually purchased the property in June of two thousand and twenty-three. The moratorium was put into place in July of two thousand and twenty-four. And I, I guess you may ask, well, why didn't they start developing the property in two thousand and twenty-three when they bought it? At the time, Mr. Zadora, Mr. Leonard Zadora was very ill at that time, and he was going through a lot of medical procedures and issues, and so the project was put on hold. Mr. Zadora has since passed away, and his son, Sean, who is with me here tonight, is looking to begin work on this property, which would, which would require construction of about, about seven hundred feet of road to access these lots. There would be access from Highview Drive, where there is a fifty-foot right-of-way strip that Zadora's own. One of the other things you may ask, as you see, there's, we have Lenz Ave and Cheryl Ave that come up kind of into this property. But there are two strips of land at the end of both of those roads that do not belong to Mr. Zadora. They are inaccessible. Mr. Zadora has attempted to obtain those strips of land so that they could have access from either Cheryl or Lenz Ave or both of them. And the, the property owner of those strips of land was, was not willing to part with them at a, at a reasonable cost. So going back to the, to the hardships that we are presenting, once again, for eight hundred point two point one B, it says, "The literal interpretation of the provisions of these regulations will deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of these regulations." Like I said, these, these, we're not asking for any reductions in, in the lot size that's typically allowed by the zone of thirty thousand square feet. We are maintaining the thirty thousand square feet. All we're really asking for is to allow us to put drilled wells and septic systems on these thirty thousand square foot lots, which, by the way, are generally larger than most of the, of the properties within Zadora Heights. Item C, a special condition is not from, not from any action by the applicant. I think we can state that for the record. Item D, granting of the variance requested will not confer upon the applicant any special privilege that is denied by these regulations to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. We don't feel this is a special privilege. Once again, we're simply asking to develop the amount of lots that would be available should the sanitary sewer connection would be, is available. And then finally, no conform, no non-conforming use of the neighborhood land, structures, or buildings in the same district, and no permitted non-conforming use of lands, structures, or buildings in other districts shall be considered grounds for the issuance of a variance. I don't think that's really applicable in this particular case. We're not saying, well, those, you allowed it over here, so you should allow it over there. I think that's sort of like, uh, what that refers to. So the, the notice of the sign per Section eight hundred point two point two, we did publish the notification of this public hearing in, in conformance with the regulations. And I think that's, you know, pretty much the completion of my presentation. As I said, and to, and to summarize, we are asking to allow for thirty thousand square foot lots, which are allowed in the zone in lieu of the forty thousand that are typically required for onsite septic systems. I think, and I think I might add, that particular amendment to that, to the regulations was established in nineteen eighty-seven. We went back through the, through the minutes of the meeting when that, when that regulation was adopted. There really isn't any kind of explanation as to why they, they decided to go with the, with the thirty thousand versus forty thousand for onsite septic. One of the things that I might offer, and it certainly, we're just sort of guessing here, is that, you know, back in, you know, nineteen eighty-seven, which is close to forty years ago, you had limited options for septic systems at that point. You had the, the stone trenches, you had dry wells in conditions where they were allowed in, in concrete galleries, which all took up considerable real estate. So the technology has advanced in forty years, where you can get a septic system for a single-family home in a much smaller footprint. And there are literally hundreds of options that are available these days to reduce that septic footprint that allows these smaller lots to be developed in a manner that they could not be developed in forty years ago. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Do Dave or Bill have any questions?
Bill Mengy, I go.
As far as the last lot goes, is there enough room for a fire truck or whatever to get in there and to be able to turn around without a problem?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a full cul-de-sac, fifty-foot radius, which is what the fire department requires.
And I also see in here that it's to build the, you know, a subdivision in, in, in the future. Well, in the future, the sewer plant may have the capacity to be able to take and handle.
It, it may four or five years down the road. It may. That's kind of where we are right now. I've got, I, I have three different housing projects on hold right now, where people want to build multifamily developments, apartment complexes, and they're, they're unable to connect to the, the sewer system in Killenly right now. What the, what the Sewer Commission has done at this point is they've got some money allocated for a study that will determine what the best avenue would be for them to, to move forward with, either expanding the plant or updating the, the treatment options that they have in the plant so that they, they might be able to accept some additional flow. But, and I think Jonathan would, would back me on this in that, you know, the, the timeline for that at this point is probably four to five years out, because the, the study itself is probably going to take a year. After the study is done and they get recommendations, then they have to seek grants for a design. And then once the design is done, then they have to seek additional grants to actually do the construction. So it's, it's really in limbo for quite some time.
So is there a timeline? Because, like I said, if a future subdivision is kind of right open.
I mean, they, he would certainly like to start moving forward on the subdivision, either, you know, later this year or the beginning of two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you.
I'd like to walk through a couple of the regulations in Article Eight with you again here.
Sure.
We'll do point two one B here.
Yep.
"The literal interpretation of the provisions of these regulations would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of these regulations." The moratorium is, is a blanket townwide moratorium, right? So currently under the, as it stands, nobody, you know, would be able to develop on anything less than forty thousand square feet right now, unless they were attached to town sewer. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. For this, for this particular zone.
Right.
That, you know, that forty versus thirty thousand is, is in, in this zone.
Right.
So all zones have.
So it's not necessarily, like, not necessarily a peculiarity, I would say, because the moratorium is across the board on everybody.
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
And then that the, we'll go to two one C. "The conditions and circumstances don't result from the actions of the applicant." Now, if you over-complied, let's say, and you split that tract into two lots, it wouldn't be a problem, would it?
No, it's not.
So, so you're kind of forcing the hardship yourself, in my opinion, by just not going with the forty thousand square feet.
Well, I, I disagree with you in that, you know, the purchase, the purchase of the land was predicated upon a belief that there'd be a certain amount of development available for the lot. So, and I know that, you know, you, you cannot claim a hardship for, you know, financial hardship, right? Right? That is one of the, one of the things. So you can't do it for financial gain, right?
Right.
But, but I would make the argument here that the, the moratorium is called, is not, is not, it's not a financial gain. It's a financial loss as a result of this. So they get, it, it literally, it's, it's one additional lot. We can, we can do with the, with the forty thousand square foot lots. We get, we get six lots. With the thirty thousand, you get seven lots. With the cost of building, the cost of, you know, road, road designs and, and road building and so forth these days, once again, you, you get to that tipping point where, you know, what, where exactly does that break even versus profit versus loss come in at that point? So I would submit to the Commission that by this moratorium being put in, that they've, they, they're not looking to make, you know, additional money by doing an extra lot. They're just looking to recoup their costs in a manner that, you know, so they don't actually lose money on this particular project.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Not a question, to start anyways. So to confirm with Norm, the placard was erected. It, it is visible from there, street being Highview Drive.
Correct.
And it met the, the standards under the zoning regulations for that. I did submit for the record a staff report, kind of summarizing, and I believe Norm did kind of cover most of all, if not all of those points, but I do point to particular regulations within the staff report. I did include for the record copies of the sewer moratorium, along with its amendments. There have been, I believe, two amendments since it has passed. Also for the record, I had engineering provide a sewer map, which I believe there's a larger one in your packet if you, if you need it, just kind of showing the direction of some of the existing mains in that area, not necessarily any of the separate levels. Put the mains in that area. Closest line, like the applicant did allude to, is on Maple Street. The next closest is up towards Lat Lane. I believe Norm did reference the, the timeline, or my opinion on, on the timeline for the sewer moratorium. The timetables that the applicant did discuss are the optimistic ones, correct, in terms of the shortest potential timeframe, being five to seven years. And we're about a year into the moratorium as it sits right now. I do have questions as it relates to, on that draft plan. I do see test holes indicated on the plan. When were those test holes done? Or were they done? Or is that just a?
They, they were done, well, there was, there was snow on the ground, so it was probably February this year.
February of this year, okay.
I believe so.
And they, they were done for a total, for seven septic systems?
They were done, they were done, you know, for the seven areas there. And we also, you know, like to go out there and dig test holes just to see what the soil conditions are for, you know, structurally, what the houses would have to be like, you know, whether you could do a full basement there. Where, you know, what kind of preparation you'd need to do for a road bed, things, things of that nature. So it's not just the septic system, you know, from an, from an engineering perspective, we really like to evaluate the soil conditions out there as well.
Okay. And then so the, as it's laid out right now, you, you believe you could get forty, forty thousand square foot lots for six?
Yes.
Six, okay.
That's correct.
And we're not, I noticed in the draft plan, the discontinued, we'll call it discontinued portion of the road, whether or not it was discontinued or not, I think it's labeled as discontinued on the town G I S.
Yeah, discontinued or abandoned by non-use.
Yep.
And I know that, you know, from a legal perspective, it's, it's, it's a very nebulous sort of thing with attorneys these days.
Yes.
And I think every situation, like, years ago, when, when the, when the road was discontinued, it would usually be by a town meeting. And the way that it would work there is they kind of strike a line right down the middle of it, and half of it goes to the abutting properties. It's not always the case any longer. It's, sometimes they'll, they'll discontinue a road, but the town will keep ownership of it. Or, or it might go to one property owner if someone could demonstrate that they felt as though they're, they're justified to do that. So, and, and the other, the other thing is abandoned by non-use. And the abandoned by non-use is that, well, yeah, it was used for many years. They decided not to use it anymore. It's overgrown. The town never discontinued it. And, and there it sits, and it's kind of in limbo, which with our survey and the, and the, um, the research that we have done on the property, and going back to a couple of other surveys that were done on the property, I think everyone came up, came to the same conclusion that the actual status of that road or paper street or road continued, discontinued, is really up in the air. No one knows exactly what the status of it is.
So there's no claim of ownership or, and that land's not being calculated in your square footage?
It is not.
Okay.
No.
So you did test holes. Did you do a formal perk testing?
No, just test holes, the, the deep test holes. I stand corrected. The per, the percolation tests were done. Sean just told me that, yeah, the percolation tests were, so the deep test holes and then a percolation test for the seven lots were done as well. So my, my error.
Were those sent all the way to, like, Health Department? Like, was there an approval or they just?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Prior to Zadora?
I think.
Uh, personally, okay. I did go through the record, Norm, and you let me know I'm, I'm incorrect. I went back to the nineteen sixty-five maps. Never part of the Zadora Heights development, correct? Always, always kind of a separate piece of land?
Yes.
Okay.
It was landlocked.
Yes.
Who would be responsible for the maintenance of the road that you would be putting in?
Oh, we haven't even gotten to that point yet, where with the, with, you know, the construction of the roadway. I mean, the, the hope, I believe, would be that we do it to town standards, and then the, the town would ultimately, the Board of Select would actually have to, or the town council would have to adopt that road.
Was there any other questions from anybody?
So this is a public hearing, and if you'd like, Mr. Chair, we can either start with the room, members that are in the room, or we do have some people online. But prior to that, I figure we'd start with the written.
Okay.
Comments. These are part of the record. They are on the town website, under Citizens' Comment. There's copies up here, if anyone would like a copy of them that is here tonight. I'm just going to kind of summarize the side, so I don't introduce any bias by reading them, but it is up to you, Mr. Chair, if you want me to read them. But Caitlin Huber is in opposition to Application twenty-five eight forty-seven. She did not list an address. The next comment is from Diane Suma, Three Weeks Lane. She is also against the variance change. And John Horn from Laurel Drive is also against the variance change. Those are the three.
Thank you, Chair.
Did you want to start?
You want to start online?
Online, to see who we have online. So not everyone at once, but if, if anyone who has joined us through WebEx would like to speak either for, against, or to ask a question, we just ask that you unmute your mic and give us your name and address, and then you can give your comments. Second call for anyone who is on WebEx who would like to give comment. Okay, hearing none. We'll move back to the room. But if there is someone, after we're done with the room, I will give another chance for anyone online to, to give comment. So at this time, if anyone wants to make a comment, ask any questions, we just ask you go up to the podium, state your name and address, and go ahead. It should be on.
Okay.
My name is Bruce Aiken. I'm at seven eighty-five South Frontage Road. But I'm here on behalf of my ninety-eight-year-old father-in-law, who lives at forty Highview Drive, the property that backs up to this. And I'm really here twofold. The Zadora has built my father-in-law's house in two thousand and The Zadora has built my father-in-law's house in two thousand and six, and they were spectacular. They handled everything incredibly well. And knowing that they're the ones building in the back, it puts me at ease. My only concern is the well, his well, is six hundred feet deep. So I don't know what, adding additional wells nearby, what impact it would have, but I have a lot of faith and trust in the Zadoras to do what's right, so I wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Robert Hyer, twenty-two Sherrill Avenue. I just want to make a point for the committee. I was on part of the Planning and Zoning Commission that started this whole thing way back when, and I was chairman of the Town Council that adopted the zoning ordinance. I was really strongly opposed to any reduction in lot size. When we, when we did all this work, we went over this in depth in order to set the forty thousand square foot. And I just think that we not be appropriate to reduce the size. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Latique Barclay, twenty-six Dark Lantern Hill Road, I'm here as a citizen of Killingley. So I believe Zadora wants to decrease lot sizes from forty thousand square feet in low density for, to thirty thousand because of pure greed. They just talked about losing money on the project. So that looks to me as they're trying to propose a financial hardship. The address of the property is one sixty-nine Rock Avenue. Rock Avenue does not have public sewer or septic. And they have to put in, had to get an, grant an easement to get to Maple Avenue. So that property that they want to build on does not have access to sewer without the granting of an easement. So it lands in the area where forty thousand square feet per housing unit is the regulation. Looks to me like they're trying to, to change the regulations. Zadora Heights, those homes having less than the forty thousand has nothing to do with this. Zadora Heights was built prior to those zoning regulations. And I'm sure it has nothing to do with how the septics were set up, with the more high-quality septic systems that take up less room. That would bring higher density. A low-density area is a low-density area. So when, every time they update septic systems, are we supposed to decrease the size of the building lots? No, it's already says thirty thousand square feet if it has public water and public sewer, and forty thousand for well and septics. If you build with too many homes and increase the density, you, you are looking at using up too much water. People's wells can go dry. I think this is just pure greed. And they should have looked into how the access to Rock Avenue was, and it's not our problem that it's an unused road. That's the address of the property, and that's just the way it is. They should have done their work, and I don't believe that just because they're going to be losing money, which is actually what he said, they don't want to lose money on the project to increase the density of housing, that's totally wrong. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Rod Leonard, twenty-one Lenz Avenue. We've lived there since eighty-six, eighty-five, something like that. Everybody likes a dead-end street. This thing kind of changes it. It seems like, as it is, we only have one access road in and out of that location. We've had some problems in the past, fortunately not often, but just adding the extra, these extra houses here is just adding a lot more danger to access to that place. We talk about that road that comes off of Maple Street. They tried to do that a long time ago, and it's not abandoned, it was abandoned because it was too expensive. The grade was too high, it was going to cost too much to get a road in that way. So that's, my understanding is why it wasn't used. And I think that if there's going to be something in there, we don't need less than thirty thousand square feet. We need the forty thousand. I'm opposed to any of it, but if that's the way it's going to be, then I would absolutely consider that's not a hardship. That's not a hardship. Anybody that lives in our neighborhood will tell you about hardships and having to deal with septic systems and everything else. We've dealt with it, so, and I respect Mr. Zadora, and I respect his father, but he bought the property well knowing, believe me, he knows the deal with that. He didn't buy it, no, oh my gosh, now I can't afford it. Well, you bought it, deal with it.
Anyone else?
My name's Tim Kelly, I live at twenty-seven Lenz, at the very end. Just bought the house in October, bought it because of the dead end in the area. Already had problems with the well, tried to repair it, I mean, it's, it's livable, but, you know, it's, we've run out of water as it is, you know. So I just wanted to piggyback off of what Rod said, and I'm opposed to all of it, but, you know. That's it.
Thank you.
Another comment, so if that subdivision is actually able to have town water and sewer, is Zadora going to build or use that access to connect to Maple Av, Maple Street? Because if so, if anybody had a septic problem and there was a sewer access, those people would have to cook, hook up to that sewer. So is Zadora going to go ahead and put in that access there and put it in front of all the homes so that they can hook up to the sewer when their septics fail? That'll become the homeowner's problem, and they probably won't even realize that. I believe that he'll, has no intention of using that easement, it's just pure greed. Thank you.
John, I have a question, how far does city water go up on Maple?
There we go. How far does city water go up? I believe Connecticut Waters, I did look at the map, I don't think I included that as part of the packet, but it basically runs down Maple Street and that whole area.
Right. And there's.
Portion of Lat Lane as well.
It's not, you know, the, the regulations don't, don't say anything about public water for the thirty thousand. It's just public, it's just the public sewer is what it is. So I know there have been a couple of comments regarding public water here. There is no proposal to use public water here, there's no, and the regulations don't say anything about public water. They, they only state onsite sewer versus public sewer. That's all it is.
Mr. Chair, if, if that's mainly the comments currently for the room, the public hearing is still open, but the applicant has, I'm sure would like a chance to either respond or to touch on any of the points that might have been brought up. Sure.
Yeah, I know there have been a couple of comments about the impacts on wells and so forth. I mean, you're talking, you know, three-bedroom homes that use four hundred and ninety-five gallons a day for water, so this is not by any means an excessive water use. You know, people's wells are independent of each other unless they're in, unless they're actually tapped into some sort of a bedrock aquifer where everybody has access to the, to the, to the same aquifer and the same source of the water. But well depths and, and access to, you know, certain veins of water are all typically independent of each other. I have a perfect example, because I get seven gallons a minute on my well, and my, my neighbor's well is about two hundred feet away from me, and he gets forty-five gallons a minute, so it's, each, each, each well is independent. And unless you've got some sort of an intensive use that you're tapping into an aquifer, typically onsite wells do not impact a neighbor's well.
Was there anybody else that wanted to speak, or are we?
Going to ask again, because we have a few people here on the WebEx. If anyone wanted to speak, feel free to unmute, now would be the time. Hearing none. Norm, a question for you, in regards to the style of subdivision, has, has any thought been looked at for cluster development, formerly flex development? I think some people might.
We, we looked at it, but the, the problem with the cluster development is that, you know, you have to dedicate a certain amount of land to common land or open space. That really doesn't work on a six-point-eight acre parcel.
Okay.
That's, that's the problem with this, so if, if, if that's the case, and we have to, and we have to, you know, deed or set aside a, a bunch of land, now you're reducing the lot sizes to probably a half an acre or so, especially with, if you're doing even a reduced-length roadway or shared driveway, whatever it happens to be. I just don't think it really works in this particular development.
Okay. It is true, donation of land or conservation easement are both potential options, or potential items through cluster development, because it is a special permit. So the Planning and Zoning Commission could also accept fee, fee in lieu of, but that obviously is not this board.
Right.
But I just wanted to throw that out, out there as something to explore.
I mean, we anticipate that that's going to be the case anyway. When this project moves forward, the, the fee in lieu is, is, is going to be the way that this particular project goes, because there really isn't any opportunity to set aside any, any land for open space. There's nothing contiguous up there.
No.
That, that connects with other open space areas, so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do that.
Yeah, I, I believe there's a little bit of open space in the Greek Orthodox subdivision from nineteen ninety-seven, but I don't think it abuts this parcel.
It does not abut it, no.
That's Laurel Drive extension. Just a reminder for the board, now's the time to ask questions, if you have any questions, just because once we close the public hearing, it's mainly just deliberation at that point. And that same, same goes for the room, once the public hearing is closed, that would be the end of comments, or anyone who's online. So assuming, Mr. Chair, we're looking probably last call for comments.
So with that being said, just David or Bill, do you guys have anything to say to us, or question?
Bill Mengi, no, I don't have any questions, everything was pretty well answered throughout the presentation.
David?
Uh, David is so, David is so, I don't have any questions, everyone presented a save.
Need a motion to close the public hearing, two-five-eight-four-seven, Leonard Zadora and Sons LLC.
Bill Mengi on second.
Do a roll call though?
David Izzo?
Yes.
Lynn LaBerge?
Yes.
William Mengi? Jared Peachey?
Yes.
Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Just reminding everybody, that's just closing the public hearing.
Now on to Article Five, Unfinished Business. Application number two-five-eight-four-seven of Leonard Zadora and Sons LLC to vary the town of Killingley. Zoning regulations four-fifty, dimensional requirement, table A, minimum lot size from forty thousand square feet to thirty thousand square feet, to allow for thirty thousand square feet of lots serving by onsite wells and septic in a future subdivision at one-sixty-nine Rock Ave. On the GIS map, one-fifty-five, Lot Seventeen, in the LD zone. You have any review or discussion?
Need a motion first, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a motion from the board?
So just for clarity, Mr. Chair, it is common to open with a motion in the affirmative on a ZBA variance to, to do a discussion. More frowned upon to do, to do an alternative motion. So normally we do a motion in the affirm, affirmative for a variance, have discussion, and then do the vote.
Okay.
I believe also we can refuse to do a second.
Yes, you can.
Is there a motion to approve application twenty-five-eight-four-seven of Zadora, Leonard Zadora and Sons LLC from the board?
Bill Mengi, I make, I make a motion to approve twenty-five-eight-four-seven. And generally I'd say hardship.
Bill, I don't want to cut you, Bill, I don't want to cut you off. Lynn, Lynn did make that motion, we're looking for a second. So we're just looking for a second at this time.
Oh, sorry, Bill Mengi on second, motion, application twenty-five-eight-four-seven.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, so now we will go to discussion.
Any discussion from the board?
My concern is that this sets sort of a slippery precedent. We don't know how long the moratorium is going to be in effect, we have an estimate. I feel like if there were anybody else, an individual marching in here, that this probably wouldn't pass. And again, as I discussed with the applicant when he was at the podium, I, I feel like this is, these hardships are rising from their desire to not comply with the existing regulations. So I, in my opinion, it goes up against our regulations under Article Eight as it stands. And if we don't meet all four of those criteria, then it's, it should not pass. It's, it's not a peculiarity to the area, because the moratorium is town-wide, again. And I think I would say that I could only surmise why they set forty thousand square feet as opposed to thirty thousand with town. I would say that, uh, I could only surmise why they set forty thousand square feet as opposed to thirty thousand with, with town service. But I would say, do you, do you remember we had, um, Randy Smith in here from Pyramid Builders a few months ago? So what happened? He had to have his septic tank moved because it couldn't fit. It, it's to keep people from coming to have to come back before the board a hundred times through variances because construction doesn't go as planned. They need that kind of room. Cause it's, I mean, that's the only thing that I could guess. And, and if I could editorialize a little bit, I would say that we're probably in the position that we're in with the sewer plant and other services because we're kind of outgrowing our infrastructure a little too quickly and these things were in place to prevent that.
Yep.
I mean, that's how I feel about it.
Leave discussion from, uh, David?
Uh, I do not have any questions, Jim.
So we have a second, we take a vote? Do a roll call vote?
David Izzo?
I abstain, my vote.
Oh, abst- oh, abstain, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Lynn LaBerge?
No.
William Mengi?
Yes.
Jared Peachey?
No.
Andrew Farner?
We don't have a quorum, right?
No, you have a quorum here. You can.
Not with the votes, I went on four.
No, it doesn't matter.
Oh, abstain.
So the motion would fail. The motion did fail.
Okay. Um, on to?
So the motion failed, so the application's denied. Um, that's how it would, it would sit at this point. There will be a legal ad, um, sent to the Norwich Bulletin, uh, probably to be published some point next week, which does start a fifteen-day appeal period, um, if anyone, uh, aggrieved by the decision, wanted to pursue an appeal. If anyone has any questions about the application or any other processes, they're welcome to, uh, reach out to my office, um, or I can give them my card. And then we would be moving on to new business, Mr. Chair.
Motion was denied, but it, for any building or just for that many lot for four thousand?
So the variance, the variance was denied. So, um, i- if an application wanted to be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission, say for a sub- subdivision, it would have to be under those regulations, uh, without the benefit of a variance.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
On to Article Six, New Business, Our Annual Organizational Meeting, Review of Bylaws.
So I am realizing, Mr. Chair, I don't believe I included a fresh set of bylaws in the, um, agenda packet. If you, um, would like, I can offer you, uh, a set or go retrieve a set of bylaws. Uh, I believe we did, uh, fully review those the last organizational meeting. Um, so I will leave that up to you, Mr. Chair, whether or not you wanna revisit that at a later date. Um, or, um, I can retrieve copies.
I would say just get us copies and we can just review it at a later date.
Review it at a later date, okay. So, um, can we just have a motion then to, uh, table it for a later, later date, that, that particular item?
So I'll make a motion that we take and table the review of bylaws until a later date.
I'll second.
I'll second.
On to Article Two.
Just a, a vote.
Oh.
If we could do roll call just because we do have members that are.
David Izzo?
Yes.
Lynn LaBerge?
Yes.
William Mengi?
Yes.
Jared Peachey?
Yes.
And Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Okay, on to election of officers. Article.
Um, so the, at this point, the meeting gets turned over to me. What, what we, I usually offer up is whether or not anyone would like to make any nom- uh, nominations. I will entertain nominations, um, for a, um, a chair, a vice chair, and I believe we do a secretary as well. Do we have a secretary?
Yep. I think we just have the.
I think it's just the chair and the vice chair for this board. I'm, I'm mistaken. That's where the bylaws would have came in handy, right? Um, so, uh, um, if, I will take a nomination either separately or, um, uh, I guess as a party ticket if they, if you'd like, um, uh, from any of the members at this time.
David Izzo, I think the motion is to keep it as it is.
Do we have a second? I'll say.
Bill Mengi, I'll second.
Okay. Um, so that is, uh, for, uh, Andrew as chair, Lynn as vice chair. I'm gonna verify with the nominees if you are happy with those positions, uh, or taking the roles for those positions.
Almost, Ed.
Yes, I'll say.
That being said, I would, uh, would like a roll call vote, uh, for the nominated slate of Andrew as chair and Lynn as vice chair.
David Izzo?
Uh, yes.
Lynn LaBerge?
Yes.
William Mengi?
Yes.
Jared Peachey?
Yes.
Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
That was close, man. Close it off.
So at this point, I will turn it back over to our new and returning chair, uh, Andrew, and, uh, move on to adoption of minutes.
Article Seven, Adoption of Minutes from February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, our regular meeting. Do we have a motion for adoption?
David Izzo, I think that motion would, um, uh, send minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call vote?
Yep.
Cause it's the phones.
Yep.
David Izzo?
Uh, David Izzo, yes.
Lynn LaBerge?
Yes.
William Mengi?
Yes.
Jared Peachey?
Yes.
Andrew Farner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
On to Article Eight, Correspondence to the Board.
Uh, I have no, uh. Let me turn that on. I have, uh, no new correspondence, uh, to you tonight.
Then on to Article Nine, Council Liaison.
From the town council meeting, we had, um, several nominations to, um, boards and commissions. And from Buddy, the, um, acting town manager from his report, he attended a road safety assessment workshop. And, um, the workshop was held in a local town with, um, two road issues. One of the issues is similar to Killingley's, which is the, um, traffic backup with the, um, buses during, um, parent, um, drop-off and pickup and, um, putting up no parking signs in surrounding areas. So it seems to be a problem in many towns. Um, there's a, a lot of empty buses. One town had, um, said they might offer, uh, parents some money to have their kids go on the buses instead of dropping them off and picking them up at school because the traffic is quite a problem. Um, there was collective bargaining for the, um, police and the armed security officers. The election was held on June, um, seventeen. And the, both of the votes were unanimous for a union. The East Coast, um, Greenway Trail, the town of Putnam has conditional approval, um, for design of the new recreational trail from Deep. And Deep has earmarked the old trolleyway as the location of the trail. Um, June first started hurricane season and Deep held an online meeting about upcoming, um, the upcoming, um, season predicting an abnormal activity. Um, the Connecticut land use recording fees went up as of, um, effective as of July first. The Connecticut Interagency PFAS Task Force, um, Jonathan probably can pronounce that. They're gonna have, um, be conducting private well sampling around training centers, um, where PFAS has been used in firefighting foam and also, um, a source of environmental contamination for potential health concerns. So they'll start out at those wells and if they need to, they'll expand out. Um, and if, um, I believe a part of the area goes into the Quinabog River. So if any of the ta- the wells test positive, then they will also start testing the Quinabog River for PFAS. And the Connecticut DOT is developing plans to replace the speed limit signs on local rural roads throughout Connecticut. Um, they will pay for the signs and as currently, um, the municipalities will have to care for the signs.
Same speeds or different? Slower, hopefully? Thank you.
We'd be at adjournment. We need a motion. We don't need a roll call for that one.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
David Izzo, I'll second here.
Everybody's in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Joanne, do you need those two letters?